Good evening, everyone. Let's call a special meeting, Board of Education Special Meeting for June 3, 2024, to order. And with our next item on the agenda is please do the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three in our agenda, inviting and receiving public comment and communications. I do not see anyone here, so we'll move on to item four, executive session. Okay, I'm going to need a motion to adjourn our meeting to executive session at 6:01 PM as permitted by Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-225A, for the following purposes as allowed by Section 1-200, Subparagraph 6, Subparagraph A. That is, a discussion concerning the evaluation of the superintendents of schools, that the attendance of this executive session shall be limited to the members of the Board of Education and the superintendent of schools. At this time, I would, well, so I need a motion, a second.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, I'll invite the superintendent to join us in executive session. All right, we're all back. Can I get a motion to return to public session at 6:52 PM?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I'm going to read the motion as I have it. I'm sorry, I don't have a slide for you. I need a motion that the Farmington Board of Education hereby extends its contract with the superintendent of schools for a new three-year term commencing on July 1, 2024, and that it further amends said contract as follows. Salary payable under Sections 5A1 of the contract is hereby increased by 5% for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. An increase of $2,500 will be applied to Section 5A2 for an elective deferral, 403B. Section 6G will provide for a one-time severance payment upon the retirement from the Farmington Public Schools after 15 years of service in the amount of $35,000. And that may be moved further that the Board authorize the chairperson to execute the contract as amended on behalf of the Board.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Kathy, I'll just say this on behalf of the Board. You continue to be an outstanding representative of our community. You continue to lead this district at the highest level. Your leadership with respect to getting our new high school built, negotiating a bus contract, working on the elementary ad hoc, doing all the things that you do, I could spend probably a half hour identifying it all, but I can say on behalf of the Board, we're very happy to approve this contract. Okay, you're welcome. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right, now can I get a motion to adjourn the Board of Education Special Meeting at 6:55 PM?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, June 3, 2024. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item five, approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the May 13, 2024 BOE Regular Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Sorry, second.
Any discussion?
I got one thing to put in. The green efforts load was not 47,000 pounds, it was 4,700 pounds.
Okay.
It's a lot of garbage, but that's the only change that I.
We can make that change, for sure. Any others? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention? Motion carries. Motion number two, to approve the May 13, 2024 BOE Special Meeting Minutes as presented. Can I get a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great. On to item six, consideration of the superintendent's report. Kathy?
So, our first agenda item for the superintendent's report is the summer learning programs, and Kim will cover that topic.
Thank you, Kathy. It is that time of year again where we have so many exciting opportunities to offer to our students and families in the district, and I will just briefly highlight some that you've come to know perhaps, and maybe your children have participated in. We have an exciting summer exploration academy at Westwoods again this year. That is combined with the elementary extended school year program in special services. We'll be at Westwoods, as I said, and currently we have about 140 students enrolled in that program. Our strings camp is alive and well, unbelievably well, with 150 students enrolled, and a music band camp also at Westwoods with 50 students. We have a middle-level summer academy at IAR with smaller numbers, approximately 15 students at the moment. A high school credit recovery suite of courses that are offered, and estimating approximately 75 students participating in those classes. Not only credit recovery, but also additional enrichment or coursework that students just like to take over the summer to free up time in their schedule during the school year. And of course, Brian is here tonight, and Lori's here, so just acknowledging all of their work, we have the Excel Summer Camp and many enrichment programs happening, so it's an amazing community in that way. We have so many opportunities for families and our students, and we're excited to get going this summer and, you know, be back in person again. It's a great, it's a great program, so any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Kim, can you talk about credit recovery a little bit, like what challenges you're seeing with that? And it's just kind of like an ongoing conversation we've had, you know, like where we're doing it, how we're doing it, things like that?
Yeah. I think that we feel very good about the ways in which our mastery-based learning model has assisted students in knowing as they get to this point in time in the school year and perhaps have not succeeded fully to achieve credit in a course. It's not like repeating the entire course all over again. It's really focusing in on the parts of the course or the skills that they need to work on to get to a level of mastery. And so I think instruction in those credit recovery courses is more personalized, more targeted, and students really know what they need to do in order to be successful. So I think that has helped make those courses feel more along the lines of, I can do this, I just needed a little extra time, and teachers are there to support them, and they have information from whatever teacher the student had during the school year, they have information, like a little profile for what students need to be able to accomplish in order to receive credit.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
All right. The FHS Building Committee update. I'm really thrilled to welcome our Building Committee Chair, Megan Guerrero, to the table. It's been and continues to be a pleasure to work with Meg and the entire FHS Building Committee on behalf of our school district and community. This really is a historic and very special time for the Farmington schools and our greater community as we get closer to the opening of our new amazing high school facility. So Meg, I know you have some things to share. We also have a few pictures to share too, because we always like to give you that visual update as well.
Yeah, I think the pictures are more meaningful than anything I'm going to say to you this evening, but first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Meg Guerrero, Chairperson of the Building Committee. And I also want to mention that I come to you to the day, three years from the approval of the referendum. So kind of interesting, I had to kind of think back too. I have the big sign in my garage that I drive by every day, and I happen to see. Look at that, same day. So really exciting work, I think, that we can talk about today, but what I thought I'd do is, and I think probably one of the last meetings we will have in this building, is give you a quick update on our timeline, where we are, open it up for any questions that you may have for me, and report out some really good and exciting news if that works for everybody. Okay. So what we put together here is just kind of a general overview, I'm not going to go into great detail in each one of these phases, but if you remember when we started communication on the project, we really kind of broke it down into four separate phases when we talked about the timeline. The first one you see there was Phase One Early Enabling, very short amount of time, and if you remember, this was the work that was put in to put in the temporary parking lot, to put site work and try to reduce disruption, and do some work over the summer so that we were better prepared when the students came back in the fall of that timeframe. So that really helped us a lot on our timeline overall, and was very successful, just a really good approach, I think, that was recommended by our professional partners. Then we move right into Phase Two, which is actually new building construction. So you see there our timeline, that red line you see is where we are today. So we are certainly well along on our process, and certainly we are on time for an opening for beginning of the next school year. So we will be moving the students, the students will actually start the next school year in the new building. So hopefully you have an opportunity to see that as you drive up tonight, which is pretty exciting. It's really starting to look very buttoned up, if you notice, and really looks amazing, and hopefully very soon you'll be able to have a tour inside as well. You guys had an opportunity actually just recently to go in, but we're going to open that up to the community. But we are on time there. But I'm going to talk to you a little bit more about Phase Three and Phase Four as well. So you'll see there's a couple of things that need to happen in addition to the building of the new school, is the renovation for the central office building, which is the 900 wing that you walked by as well to get here. And that is something that is been in planning stages for a while, and as of right now, we're actually looking at the renovation starting mid-August timeframe that you see there, and ending probably February, March 2025 timeframe, so just to give you an idea of general timing for that. And what you'll see there is working in conjunction with that is demolition work that will happen on-site as well. That demolition work is scheduled to begin as soon as the school year ends. So that's going to be starting in the next few weeks, actually, to start that process, and obviously quite a lot of work that needs to happen there. And I will mention too that certainly that is working in coordination with the 1928 project and their timeline as well. So there's a lot of coordination between the two projects to make sure that that all goes successfully. And then the final phase you see is the tennis courts and remaining site work. So as you can imagine, we've got a lot of work to do once we get the new building up, the renovation complete for continued site work. There's site work that will happen over the summer as we are looking to open up the new school and do work around the new construction, but then that will obviously continue through the point of the demolition, the cleanup, additional site work, and then you see their timeline around the tennis courts. So that is the big, other big portion of the work that we're managing within our project. And from tennis courts, the estimated timeline around there, beginning late October, November timeframe, and completed June 2025 is the estimate from a timeline perspective. So that's kind of the, and believe it or not, so that actually shows the end on that timeline, which is pretty amazing. It's a lot of work that's gone into this. Couple of things to note, I am happy to report out that the timeline as you see it there, and it is planned, is on time, and the project budget, we are very much on budget with this project and are proud to say that, and so happy to report that out to you as well. And the other piece of information that's critical is the ribbon cutting ceremony. So you'll see there we are hard at work at planning this, so you'll see it's August 26 at 5:00 PM. That is the day before, the first day of school. So we are working hard with the district to make sure that that goes smoothly. We're trying to make this as easy as it can be for everybody, but that will be an actual formal ribbon cutting ceremony, and then an opportunity for the community members to tour the building as well. We are also considering, we know that timeframe can be a little tight for people because it is a Monday night, we are also considering another opportunity for a weekend in August to bring people back in to do some community tours as well, because we certainly want people to come and enjoy the work that's been done and really see the amazing facility that's been built there. So we're, lot of planning to go on there, but I think, you know, more information to come. And you should be getting a postcard in your mailboxes very shortly with some additional information about the ribbon cutting, just so you can put that on your refrigerator or wherever you post anything, to help remind you of the date there, as well as, there's some important information on that postcard about restriction to the property over the summertime, so that's always a question you might get as well as board members is, you know, because of, as you see that timeline, the demolition that's going to be happening, renovation work, and just a lot of activity up here on this campus, there will be actually no additional access to community members to this campus site over the summer. Because of that, we just want to make sure everybody stays safe, that we, you will certainly be able to get to the library, you'll be able to get to Town Hall, although that will remain open, but we will be restricting access up here on the hill for the campus.
Any questions for Meg?
Outstanding job.
We'll just move on maybe to show some pictures.
Absolutely, please.
Just so you could see how it's shaping up. I mean, we were just there, how long ago, and it already looks quite different. Yeah.
Cafeteria.
Yep. Oh, here, Scott.
Second floor hallway, classroom.
This we didn't see, right?
So we were up there most of the day on Friday, had some different meetings on-site, and they put at least half of this in to finish it out on Friday, so this is the, obviously now they're going to go back. They had sanded it this morning once already, and they're going to start painting lines and staining the floor. It'll have some different designs on it and branding it, but that was Friday during the day. That's the gymnasium. That's actually half the gymnasium. You can kind of see in the top left-hand corner, the skyfold partition, and then like the triangle in the left-hand corner is the moving wall that creates a much larger field house.
Awesome. Now, anybody have any questions for Meg?
Is there a Riverhawk going to be in the middle of the gym floor? Nice.
I just, I just want to say thank you to Meg. You know, you commented that it's been three years since the referendum, like, I feel like it was yesterday, but three years, plus all the time that went into building up to the referendum. You spent an incredible amount of time cheering this, and thank you.
Outstanding job.
I would say our community owes you incredible debt, and I look forward to celebrating you here when this is all done. The Board will, Superintendent, I will certainly talk about how we can express our recognition and our gratitude. You've positively affected the lives of thousands of people, if you think about it, and you did it, you know, you had a team behind you certainly, but it was, it was a really bitter pill to swallow when we lost the first time, and it was through your leadership that got us back on track and got us to a place where we can get this building done. And so I hope this is, this is, you know, other than your beautiful boys, who I know very well, and your husband, who I adore, he's a great guy, this has got to be one of your crowning lifetime achievements. What a legacy, what a legacy you're leaving for town, our town. So thank you so much, really.
Thank you, obviously, to, as partners in this whole process. I mean, we can, between the Town Council and all of you being our partners in this, and all of us being at the table together, with every single one of those conversations, every community meeting we held, we had representation across the Board and had, you know, undying support, literally, around every decision that was made, and people really helping us move this forward. So beyond the Building Committee's support, all the community members that came forward to help, as well as the Board of Ed and the Town Council, and to make this happen, it's unbelievable. It really is. And on a personal note, just so you know, I came from a family of teachers. So my dad was a math teacher, so I heard a lot about education and the value of it. So although I didn't go in that direction myself, I really understood the value of that and what that meant to our families. So having an opportunity to give back for us and, you know, for my family, I can tell you my mom is very proud. She hears about it all the time, she follows it, but it's very meaningful, it really is. So I am honored that I had the opportunity, and thank everyone for the continued support.
And also thank your family for its sacrifice and giving up your time, you know?
I feel like I never knew that.
I know.
But I've always known you had a heart of a teacher. When I first came here, our Farmington Public School Foundation was not doing well. Meg stepped in and brought it back to life, and it, as you know, it continues to provide amazing teacher-initiated innovation grants to this day, and it was in a very different place, and I feel like she did that for us with the Building Committee as well. You really just came in at the time when we needed you most, and you saved that project, and you made it even better. So I just, you know, really want to thank you. Now, this is not the only way, well, thank you, but you do get a Riverhawk hat tonight. So just, it's a pleasure to work with you.
You get a.
Yes. Get a.
Thank you. Not what I was expecting. I was here to give you a business update, and I'm almost tearing up, so we got it. Again, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and we'll, I'll let you get back to the meeting from here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Meg. Continuing Ed?
Our next is our Continuing Education Annual Report. Lori is here for one last time.
Last in a row.
You never know, you never know, Lori. I'll just say. So again, joining us this evening, it's bittersweet, your last Continuing Education Report.
Yep.
I just again want to thank you, Lori, for your hard work and your commitment to excellence and your care for this amazing program that so many people benefit from here in Farmington. And I feel like you took the program and you just continued to make it better and better and better, and you're leaving it in such a good place, and so we just thank you so much for that, and so I'll hand this over to you for your final report.
Thank you very much, Kathy. So just to report out on the 2324 highlights, our mandated, state mandated program, which is our ESL GED, ABE and Citizenship, was at 334, which saw an increase, again, this is the highest that we've ever seen in the influx in the students in there, most being in the ESL population, but we're also seeing an influx in our GED population. We're hitting that spike from COVID with the social, emotional, and students, high-performing students that, you know, are not completing school. So we're really working with our guidance offices in all of our collaborating districts and, you know, really trying to pull them in. We had 42 countries that were represented from around the world, so that continues to grow. We started a new GED math boot camp, which is actually tonight, we have 10 students in there, and the purpose of that is a four-night, three and a half hours, just all math boot camp, in getting them ready to take their subtest in math and then go on to take the actual GED test. So we'll be able to report back on how successful we were with that, so we're excited for that. We also had 25 GED students in our program, four of them did graduate with their GED diploma this year so far. We have a couple more that are also signed up, and two of them were able to get college credit, so there is a means to do that when you get your GED. Several of our ESL students too were, attained employment with Farmington Public Schools, either as a para or substitute, or also with our childcare program with Excel. We submitted a PEP grant, as I sat before you a couple months ago. We did submit that on Transitions Career Navigation and Support, so this will be an extension of what we're currently doing with our career navigation, and that grant will allow us to hit all of our program areas, so we thought that was the best one to do at this time. Enrichment, we increased 292 over this school year compared to last year. We're still a little bit below what our enrollments were, so it's been a slow increase from COVID, but, you know, we're hopeful we're going to get there as we recruit new teachers and students. We administered the enrichment program again, this is our 15th year with Region 10, Burlington-Harlington, so we offered classes up on their campus. Workplace education, we're trying to grow in this area. We actually were just approached by Image First, which is in Farmington, about bringing teachers, ESL teachers, onto site. They have 60 employees that are non-English speakers, and they're looking to have instruction on-site, so we have a proposal with them, and it looks pretty promising that we're going to be able to continue that. We facilitated our youth ski club, Lego, IAR musical, and after-school art and math clubs, and then we administered the inter-district cooperative grant, which was Augustine Co. Francesca, which many of you may know, and that was in the summertime, it was a week-long performance. And we're excited for our move to Farmington High School. We're excited to bring people into the building. We've been in there to take a look at the space and just can't wait to use all the technology that is in there. And I wanted to introduce, if I could, so my replacement for coordinator continuing Ed, starting July 1, is Brenda Domland, who is here with us tonight. So she's worked our mandated program for the past couple of years, and has also worked at Middletown Adult Education and their credit diploma program, so I'm very confident that she's going to step into this role and continue in to bring great things that, you know, we've accomplished going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Awesome question.
Any questions for Lori? Lori, thank you. This is your last time, Lori, so.
My last.
Thank you very much. We've already given you your praises already. See, you're running out of here. Thanks, Lori.
Next is our Farmington Extended Care and Learning Excel. Brian Zareo is here. Excel is a very unique program to Farmington. We've had other districts come and visit us, and some have replicated it because it is such a successful program, such a great service to our community, whether it's childcare or enrichment opportunities, summer programming, preschool. It's just, you know, an outstanding program, and it's just been exciting to see, you know, during COVID, the self-sustaining programs really took a hit because there was not much that was happening in person, and just to see how things have turned around, it's really remarkable. So congratulations, Brian.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Before I start, I just want to thank Lori for years, probably 10-plus, 15 years plus of being a great colleague and a mentor to me, so much more to thank you to you. Yeah, so there's a couple of different ways you can, you know, view how the program is done. One is being self-sustaining, the other is student enrollment. So here's just a couple highlights from this year. We saw very large numbers this year. We had a total of over about 548 students as of May 2, which was an increase by 55 students from last year. So that includes before and after school programs and our preschool program. We had a total of 401 students participate in the pay-to-participate or intramural program in the elementary school programs, which is our biggest number year to date as well. I also like to highlight, we had 17 great student interns that went to FHS today this That group is a very talented group, and it becomes a feeder program for our program. Many of them go off to college and come back and work throughout the summer, so we're probably see, seeing probably about five that graduated last year that come back and work in the summer. So it's a great feeder program, and hopefully some come back and, you know, become teachers here as well. So it's a great full circle. This year, we had a I also like to highlight, we had 17 great student interns that went to FHS today, this year. That, that group is a very talented group and it becomes a feeder program for our program. Many of them go off to college and come back and work throughout the summer. So we're probably see, seeing probably about five that graduated last year that come back and work in the summer. So it's a great feeder program and hopefully some come back and, you know, become teachers here as well. So it's a great full circle. This year, we had a great Excel STEM Expo at Westwoods. It was a very rainy night, thunderstorms, and we still had about 150 parents come in and display all the great projects they did. So, and then, you know, nuts and bolts, we, we're up roughly about $275,000 from last year and that's directly connected to our large enrollments. And we continue to be self-sustaining with all anticipated expenses covered by Excel this year. I also just want to say, this stuff for me is just a snapshot of everything we do, but really it's the team that, that makes this happen. So I just want to acknowledge Amanda Mashad, our coordinator in the back right there. Amanda's been with us for 10-plus years and she really takes on a lot. Connie Regala, who's my early childhood coordinator, also is making a lot of changes for continuous improvement for our program. And overall, we had a great year. Looking forward to a very big summer and next school year. So I would like to open, any questions for the board?
How are you?
Good.
So I actually have a question about the intramural program.
Yes.
So I have younger kids, so I didn't know what pre-COVID happened with intramurals, but we were excited last year to hear about this intramural program at East Farms. Unfortunately, my kids were young last year. They couldn't participate with the anticipation they would participate this year. And then this year, we find that there were no intramurals. I honestly thought until I read the agenda for tonight, that the whole intramural program through the district didn't exist and like, just wasn't existing. I didn't realize till I obviously was preparing for this meeting, that you did have intramurals at West District and Noah Wallace. So I guess my question is, are we looking into, because I know that's something that all the kids and parents really loved last year. The feedback was so positive and the kids were really into it. My, both my sons are into sports. It's something they would be interested in. Have we thought about for next year, including it back at East Farms and then also I guess at Union, because I didn't realize again, it was going at West District and Noah Wallace? Can you give us some background on what happened there?
Yeah, absolutely. So East Farms historically had been one of the programs that had not run. We've, we love to get the PE teachers, the home PE teachers, to run that program. One, they know the students, they know the school, they get better drive, better pool of students that come in. This year, the PE teacher did not want to participate for whatever reason. And we just couldn't find the right replacement for that to fit those specific hours. Because you're talking a snapshot of just 3:30 to 4:15. It's a very difficult timeframe to get outside staff, but we are looking into doing that. We've, we've had it before with a, you know, someone who's not a PE teacher in the school and it had not been successful and was not self-sustaining because of that connection too.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's interesting. I didn't know that. I know they had a few student teachers this year at East Farms, so I don't know if that's been thought of as like, you know, bringing in like a college student or someone like that. But I, your point of they have a good relationship and obviously bring on the kids as part of, that, that recruitment effort is probably a big part of it too, so.
Yeah, because we, you know, that, the program has to be self-sustaining, so.
And was that the same thing at Union as well?
Union, correct.
Okay.
The way that the PE teacher splits time between different schools, it's very difficult to get back and forth to that. So we've explored before-school, after-school mix. So we are working towards that, to bring that back.
Gotcha. Thank you for the background.
Any other questions? Well, Brian, as you know, how much I love this program. And I'm like, both of my children were alumni of the Excel program and thrived in it, as I'm sure many of my board colleagues can say as well with their children's experience. It's one of the coolest things we do. It's an amazing service, for lack of a better word, that we can help with parents when, you know, the after-school pickup. And it's, it's such a, it's not just like daycare, you know what I mean? It's like the kids are doing these things. It's, it's enriching. It's fulfilling. The kids love their Excel experiences. You know what I mean? They don't see it as like, oh, I'm stuck until mom and dad. Sometimes they don't want mom and dad to come, because we're having such a good time. So, I mean, that's, and that's a reflection on your leadership, because it's been your leadership that's led us over the last, you know, eight or nine years, as I recall. So that was a reflection on you. So thank you for all your hard work. This is an extraordinary program and I know it's a model for other communities, not just around the state, but around the country. So, well done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Professional appointments, resignations, retirements. We have two resignations in this month's report. And just so everyone knows, you'll see in the fall, all the appointments from this season of hiring and they all come together in the fall in a report to the board.
And then deeper learning update?
Oh, deeper learning. So it's a really celebratory time of year for us. I'm sure many of you have been at different activities for the end of the school year. Really a time to congratulate our students, faculty, staff and administrators for, you know, their dedication, expertise and care this school year. And so the deeper learning updates are many examples of that. And so I just welcome everyone to take a look at these updates and I just hope you enjoy reading through all the wonderful things happening throughout the school district and especially at this very special time of year.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, on to our next item, agenda item, paragraph seven, unfinished business, budget impact, budget update. Scott?
All right, good evening. I didn't get a chance before they walked out, but really fortunate, as you all already commented, for our Excel and our continuing Ed program. Really proud and appreciative of the work that they're doing. In, in the business office, we are feverishly closing out the current fiscal year and getting ready for July 1st to start the next one. And so, and as you just learned last meeting, just had our audit from the previous year. So always living in those three phases, but, but, but working on that and appreciate the work being done by our team down there to get us ready for that, for a close this year. We'll have that to report likely at this point when we, when we meet each other again in late summer, early fall. Addition, some contract updates, as you see on the agenda later tonight, the Farmington Public Schools Employees United, or FPSU. That is our bargaining unit of non-certified personnel. They have ratified the contract that we negotiated throughout the winter and the board will have a chance to review that contract and hopefully take action this evening after that review. In addition, I'm pleased to report that we've been keeping the board updated on the Farmington Valley Transition Academy. This is for our students aged 18 to 22. That was for a long time on the University of Hartford campus, has been, has been housed in Bloomfield at Our Farm for the last, I'm going to go a little long here, but we'll say three years. It's really been close to three years. And, and so we have, we have been able, we have been approved by the Town of Avon Zoning Commission to move to Avon. So we've been partnering with our, with our colleagues in Simsbury. We jointly run that program together and I signed the lease agreement on Friday and Simsbury signed it this morning. So we're just waiting on, we're just waiting on who we're, who we'll be renting from and that'll be a 10-year lease agreement. So we do have more construction happening this summer because the, the space that we'll be utilizing at Riverdale Farms, if you're familiar with that, will be moving to Riverdale Farms and, and becoming a tenant there. That space will be updated for our students and we're eagerly anticipating and hopeful that later August will, will give us enough time for our approvals. If not, Our Farm is happy to host us, but we expect to be making that move as well. And that's a, a great move that will allow our, our students and, and participating members of that program to continue to thrive and, and really a great space for, for all their internships and engagement within the community, Farmington, Simsbury, Avon, bus lines to get it, you know, to continue our partnerships in the greater Hartford area. So excited to report that out to the board as well. I know we had two meetings going on simultaneously earlier. We had our CAF Advisory Committee. We, we know we approved our Chartwell's contract next year. I did want to just update you, we're waiting on the CSDE, but they use a, they use a tool to, to measure where our lunch prices should go. And so I don't have, I wish I had a more exact figure. They're a little late on, on the tool. We're awaiting the, the CSDE equity tool that you need to use to, to price your meals. All signs are pointing to an increase. We have not increased our meals in several years at this point. You know, last, last year's threshold was close to 355. I'm not sure where it will come in, but I'll have a report to the board and an update when that tool comes out. At this point, I don't know if it'll, it'll arrive to us before the end of this school year, but we'll plan on that whenever it comes out and work with Chartwell's to, to arrive at whatever that new lunch price is. I did want to inform the board of that. And then finally, we've been working to onboard Specialty Transportation, our new transportation provider. So we've had several transition meetings with Tim Griffin, who will be our new terminal manager, along with Michael Turner, who is the vice president and operates the company. So we've met with them. They've been doing work in town on their own through planning and zoning and, and getting their space set up and ready to go. They assumed the contract on July 1st. And so we've set up a timeline with them for summer transition. I do expect families will hear from our bus company, you know, obviously our, our students who are taking advantage of summer transportation, either through ESY, which is extended school year, and/or the SEA. Those will be specialty buses because that program kicks off July 1st. So, so that will time up nicely with that transition. And then we'll, we'll work with them over the summer, late July, to introduce themselves to the entire community and their team. And then mid-August with our, with our routing information. So they have been good partners to us to date in, in getting ready for that transition and, and, you know, been working steadily with M&amp;J on our, on our closeout as well. So that's what I have. Are there any questions on any of the updates tonight? Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Scott. Always thorough. Okay. Next item, 7B, policy updates, second reading, action anticipated. Can I get them? Okay, so we discussed these back in West, a couple of weeks ago, West District. I need a motion to approve the policy updates listed below for second reading.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next is 7C, policy repeal, second reading. After identifying the below, need a motion that after identifying the below policies, which are unnecessary and redundant, the board approves the repeals of these policies as a second reading.
Motion?
Second?
Discussion. Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New textbook adoption. Can I get a motion to approve the second reading of textbook adoption proposal as presented?
Motion?
Second?
Discussion. Angela?
Just prepared a comment. I'll be voting no to this motion. I would like it to be on the record that my vote does not necessarily have to do with the content of the books. For those at the last meeting, I had asked for the course syllabi and the question was put as a vote. While I respect all members of this board's opinion, I respectfully disagree that the majority vote was to not allow me to ask Veronica for class syllabi related to the books, which is public information and can be requested by any resident at any time. I come prepared to meetings and my intent is always to work collaboratively.
Wayne of order. I just don't see where this pertains to the motion on the table. I mean, I think we have to just vote on whether we approve the textbook or not.
Yeah.
What's on the table?
I'm explaining why I'm planning on voting no and I think it's important to get it on the record. This is not, so my words cannot be minced moving forward, that this is not related to the content of the book. If I could just have two more sentences.
But that's what we're voting on, is what we're voting on.
I'll let her finish. I'll let her finish. But just so we're clear, there's no record. There's no transcript here.
I'm sorry.
There's no record, there's no transcript.
Well, in the minutes, I mean, I, that's important to me.
Okay. I'll let you finish. I'll let you finish.
And again, I've said I respect everyone's opinions. This is just how I feel. I come prepared to meetings and my intent is always to work collaboratively with all board members on any agenda item, as I will continue to do so. I do not feel it should be necessary for board members to seek public information related to a motion outside of these meetings, as this is not in the spirit of collaboration. For this reason, I will be voting no to this motion. Thank you for letting me finish.
You're welcome. Any other comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So, eight to one. All right. Item eight, new business, approval of updated policy 1140, distribution of materials, first reading.
Yes, so this policy 1140, let me find my notes, is, we discussed it a little bit, Kathy and I, and gave some updates to members of the policy committee where I could this past week. Policy 1140 has to do with distribution of materials and I think it comes down to basically our Friday folders, which is our virtual way of sharing information from community events and school programs, town programs and events. And we just needed to take a look at that. Kathy has information about how this came up as a potential for revision.
Geth?
Sure. So this is part of our policy review process and it's coming to the board because any change in this policy should begin at the commencement of a school year. We will have a special meeting at some point in June for an appointment of an administrator. So it made sense to bring this forward now. So there's no confusion when the school year starts and then there's a change of practice after the school year starts. So the board is not required to maintain this policy or allow outside community organizations to distribute materials through its electronic communication, which is our Friday folders. However, we do want to keep lines of communication open when it comes to school events and information, the government, town events and information, as well as our Farmington Valley Health District. They provide really vital health information, both physical health and mental health. And so those resources are an extension of the Town of Farmington, but we wanted to make it clear which types of communications we would then, individuals would be able to submit to the district. So it's important to note that Friday folders do represent a great deal of work on the part of our staff. And when the folders have too many updates, we've, we did, we have received feedback that it can be confusing to parents. Like, what's the most up-to-date information? How long do you keep this information? It starts to pile up quite a bit and we really want to provide information that has to do with school events, government events, you know, Farm, Town of Farmington, things like that, rather than just an open, open-ended situation that we're getting things from sometimes outside of the state and all kinds of information that we're being asked to then put on our Friday folders. And it's really considered like an open forum for announcements and information. And given that the First Amendment law can be tricky, when it comes to an open forum, we had worked with our attorney and they've, they have recommended that we not close it completely to just school events. You know, we're part of a larger community. So, you know, park and rec, that's really important for our families and green efforts and things like that. Those are all also very important. So the policy revision allows for school-sponsored organizations that exist solely to support the Farmington Public Schools, like booster clubs or different events that are happening in our schools. And they're developed to communicate with our families, given what school their children attend. It also allows the Farmington governmental bodies, like the Town and Farmington Valley Health District, access to the Friday folder as well. So it, you know, it, that's where we are with this and I wanted to bring it to you prior to the school year and have a first and second reading so that it's clear at the beginning of the school year, there's a shift, that it's not completely open, but yet we've limited it to school-sponsored events, government-sponsored types of activities that especially have to do with the youth of our community and by extension, you know, the Farmington Valley Health District.
Okay. Any more, any questions?
Kathy, I know you had given us kind of like a foreshadowing that this was coming for this meeting. So after I saw this, I actually went in and read all the Friday folders for like the seven schools. I didn't, couldn't find personally anything that wouldn't be included now that's there based on this. Like I thought it was, you know, everything that was there fit into this criteria.
Yeah.
Can you just give us an example of something maybe within the last few months or the year that like would be excluded now as a result of this? So that we can just understand like what types of things, you know, are going to be excluded moving forward?
When, with the school Friday folders, you're right. It's mostly just the school, but it's the district Friday folder where we get lots of requests from camps, both inside of Connecticut and outside of Connecticut, and all kinds of different requests that can at times be a bit overwhelming for Dee in the office, but also questions come up, should this even be in our Friday folder? And because it's more open, it's always hard to kind of... And because it's more open, it's always hard to kind of make a determination and sometimes we'll get pushback on something. So I think making it really clear, especially the district, you know, that's where we get the requests. A school doesn't really get requests, but our district Friday folder, we get lots of requests that come in pretty regularly.
Yeah, I'm going to be honest with you, after you just said that, I didn't realize there was a district Friday folder, like, because I was Googling, I think to the point someone said like, it's not, it wasn't super user-friendly for me to just go to Friday folders and then click. Like, so I was Googling East Farms Friday folder, I R Friday folder, and then go into it. So how do I, what would I Google to get to?
I think you just hit the Friday folder.
I think it's, I'm sorry, isn't it divided up into sections? So each school has district-wide information and schools? So you wouldn't have to go to another?
Oh, please. It's under Families. And you hit Families and it goes to the Friday folder.
It goes to the landing page, which is the district-wide Friday folder, and there's a tile for each of them.
And each of the schools has a tile you can hit.
Plus, there's one that's just general.
Well, the, when you hit Friday folders, you come to the district one. And then you have these ability to hit each school.
I don't think I accessed it that way. I was Googling and then.
That's on the app, too. So I easily got it.
Okay. All right.
But there's not a separate Friday folder for district?
That says district?
Yes.
Could you come up?
A couple of years when we did the redesign of the website and just prior to, we streamlined it. Each school was getting and posting district-wide Friday folder announcements, which was a complete duplication of effort. So we took anything that's being posted at a district level, it's right there at the top of the Families page, and then you drill down into the individual school or school-specific announcements. It was more of an efficiency of, rather than seven people posting the same thing, we posted it one place.
Okay, that makes sense. And then from there, Kathy, you don't see anything currently that would be eliminated, do you? Or?
I don't have it in front of me. I'd have to look, but, I mean, I think camps would be a good example of it. We get lots of, what's that?
There's a Habitat for Humanity Youth Advocacy Conference. So that's not sponsored by us.
What about like Relay for Life? That was just, that was just.
What did you say, Andrew?
Relay for Life? Relay for Life?
That would be included or no? Because that's gone through.
That wouldn't be, wouldn't be.
If it's not sponsored by us, it wouldn't be something that we would include any longer.
But that would have been something recently.
That was.
Right. And I think the discussion around that had been, there's other options, like the Explore Farmington site, which also has a calendar. I think if organizations could be maybe directed to that as a part of the communication.
Well, since that's a government, we could even put a link, you know, because that goes to Farmington, Town of Farmington.
Right, which is, right. I mean, there's the patch, which isn't the government, but it's another small media community. Because I think what happens is the school district looks like they're endorsing, potentially. It could be viewed as an endorsement of these programs and that's, yeah, probably not a good thing.
Yep, I agree.
So.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the policy update of, updates for 1140 distribution of materials for a first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda, B, approval of enrollment ad hoc committee recommendation scenario three, option three, action anticipated. Kathy?
All right, so I'll take this one, Bill. That's okay.
Yeah, sure. That's fine, Scott.
So, so what we did after last meeting, appreciated Pat Gallagher's time here and hopefully that was informative. I know they've done a comprehensive review of the situation across our district and obviously have, we have a recommendation on the table tonight. After the meeting, we took down all the questions that we've received from the board. We included those in an additional Q and A that went out to families district-wide. And so we did address those. I have those linked beyond here. You know, they're also posted on the ad hoc website and again, went out to all families district-wide. In addition, I know that you received some inquiries as well, so had a chance to follow up with Pat on that. And really, at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions or take any further direction from the board as you see fit at this time.
Well, I think you covered, in the communication that went out this week, that kind of responded to the people's, the questions for the people that were at the meeting in West District. And since that meeting, we did get several emails, I think the total of four emails. And I know Pat responded and I think what I'm going to do, I'm actually going to read Pat's response, because I think it responds specifically to the comments of the residents of Farmington Ridge. And this is from Pat Gallagher. And this email will be included as part of our minutes and as part of our FAQ. Happy to share some additional insights into our process for selecting redistrict areas. It really is a balancing act where we are trying to consider a multitude of factors, including student population, travel times, and transportation routing and safety. There's never a perfect solution, but rather we carefully and thoughtfully review of these often competing factors and come up with what we think is the best solution based on our experience. Farmington Ridge was chosen for a number of reasons, including its proximity to Noah, about a mile, and the fact that the road provides a safe place to turn around a school bus for the Ridge neighborhood. In response to the other roads that were suggested to be moved instead, I can provide some rationale as to why they were not selected. Pinnacle Road is an unsignaled intersection on Route 6 and it is unsafe for a bus to turn left or go straight across Route 6. In order to get to Noah Wallace safely, a bus would need to turn right, travel to five corners, and then take Mountain Road to Noah Wallace and drive past Farmington Ridge. Country Club Road was kept in East Farms because they could be picked up by the existing East Farm buses that currently serve the Devonwood neighborhood. So we didn't want to create redundant transportation routes for those students. In addition, both of these roads are further from Noah Wallace than Farmington Ridge. Finally, I would like to note that it is important to keep in mind that the collective impact of the redistrict areas are in alleviating overcrowding at East Farms. We selected numerous streets and developments that individually contain a handful of students, but collectively contain enough students to address these issues. Please let me know if you have any additional questions. And that's from Pat Gallagher. So I wanted to share that with you all because those questions were fairly opposed by our residents and we did have our expert look at that and respond. That's his response. Like I said, this email will be part of our minutes and part of our FAQ. So I share that with you all. Any other comments, questions about any of the process? Please.
I think that's good feedback. I liked listening to that reasoning as well. I think one of the things that just resonated with me, with anyone that we've heard from is just, you know, it's easy for us to make the decision, but when you're not a member that's being affected, you know, there's the decision and then there's the execution of it. So always trying to be cognizant of that as we like move forward. And I know we talked about maybe some families, this is a great move for them, like they're closer to Noah Wallace, they want to go and that's awesome. We had toyed around with, and I know Kathy, we had talked about the communications meeting, like surveying parents, like what was your feel or what would you want to do? And then Kathy, I know you had said like, we don't want to give false hope if we can't accommodate everyone that wants to go. But is it worth like having like a liaison or a point person or somewhere where these families, like if they do want to make, like have an exemption, like having them understand the process or, and I know we talked about it last meeting where a lot of us didn't know the exemption is only for one year. So even if they got it for one year, they'd have to reapply for the next year, like. And I think a lot of this is totally covered in this. I think you guys did a great job with it. But again, it all goes down to ultimately, we're going to approve the motion and it'll go forward. So just being cognizant in the background, always like, how do we make sure the families that have these concerns are, feel like there's like a resource moving forward for different options? And I don't know what the, I'm just posing that as something that I'm trying to take into consideration while we're moving forward. Because ultimately, I think we all know even the families that came and we spoke from that, this is a positive thing in terms of overcrowdedness, like there's issues at East Farms that need to be resolved in terms of numbers. But again, like the human part of it in terms of like the actual people, I don't, I just want to keep that at the forefront, though.
Yeah, I, you know, this is one of the most difficult things that a school district needs to, has to do. And, you know, it comes out of a situation where many years ago, this district was created out of a redistricting plan. And at that time, these neighborhoods worked. And over time, things change, new developments come on board. And as we know, East Farms has the most developments coming up as well. So it's a very, and it's a very, it's our largest neighborhood. And, you know, we're trying to balance the concerns we're hearing from families with, you know, having music on a cart, not being able to have, you know, the whole community come together at, for assemblies. You know, there are implications of having an overcrowded school and we've made it work. Our teachers have been great as far as, you know, our specials teachers being really flexible. But even when it comes to staffing, Kim can tell you, it's very difficult to staff because it's never a situation where a full-time specials teacher will do it. You need another Point Two or a Point Four, which every Point Two is a day. So then you have to have people traveling there that aren't there all the time. And, you know, that makes it challenging. So with all of those challenges, we have to face this issue and try to come up with a solution. I think we have always tried to be very family-friendly and family-oriented. That's why when I arrived here 15 years ago, there was a policy that said, you can ask to go to another elementary school for your family if that is what you really need. Now, there's a couple of caveats. Every year you have to ask again and you might be told no because a school could get overcrowded. So I think, you know, we would have to, we could never do that on a large scale because we would just exacerbate the issue at East Farms. More housing developments are coming. More children are coming to East Farms. We know that. We have the numbers of the estimates. And what we've learned is those estimates are never actually completely accurate because it's a highly sought-out town for its education. So then when we think, oh, there'll only be 10 children from that development, but then there's 30. We really, we have that situation happening in our current, you know, what's happening right now. So, you know, I don't have a definitive answer, but I totally feel the same way you do. You know, I would have loved if we could have found another solution that, you know, we were able to make this work without moving anyone, but we just don't have that, that we looked at, could we add on to East Farms? We can't because of the lot. So we're, you know, or if we did, it would be kind of, if we, I remember seeing, like, if we did, it would be like, kind of like FHS, this current building where it's like an arm outside of the school and we're just not in the, in the place where we could wait three to four years for a construction project. So we looked at all of those options, but.
And Kathy, if I could just add to that point, the, that option was explored, right? It was a, you know, it would take a 10-plus million dollar capital project that added classroom space, but it did not add to the size of the cafeteria or the.
Or the gymnasium.
Gymnasium, so.
Yeah.
So the potential there, you know, it wasn't a great option from a standpoint of timing, cost, and whether or not it would actually relieve the stress that was felt throughout the building. You know, if it's helpful, a few of these answers that were included on the FAQ might just wrap around to some of the questions we're already hearing. So the last meeting, the board, I appreciated the suggestion of, what if a family wants to get a head start to Noah Wallace now, knowing that, hey, if this is, if this is the option that's going to be chosen, instead of waiting another year to transition? And so we did look at that and that was where we considered doing a survey. The risk is we're doing a survey where it's potentially disingenuous because we can't accommodate that. So question 10 talks about, is it possible? And so the answer unfortunately was no because of that. And then based on this year's enrollment report for, these are now rising students for next year. So this is, this is right now the count for impact. Next year, 13 rising kindergarteners, 12 rising, this is question 12, 12 rising first graders, 20 rising second graders, 15 third graders, and 21 fourth graders would be impacted in the, in the redistricting. So Noah Wallace, unfortunately, because the pre-K space is already taken up, there is not additional room in the school. And many, we've been monitoring their enrollment over the last couple of weeks and throughout the spring. They don't have the capacity to accommodate all of these families. And in some cases, they can't accommodate any families. This is for the Noah Wallace move, right? To move to Noah Wallace. It's difficult to say what will happen, but we do have, this is question 19, so this is, can we allow families either to move earlier? Or in this case, we also heard maybe an inverse of this question is, can we allow families to stay?
Right.
Now, we're certainly open to direction, you know, you know, our colleagues from now M&amp;P Planning, or Pat Gallagher, would say, yes, you can, but the longer, the longer you allow that, the, you know, it does have an impact on the objective, which is to, which is to alleviate population, right? Which is to alleviate the stressors, the stressors related to capacity. So, you know, there are considerations there, but, you know, it really depends in how far do you go where we're exacerbating the issue we're trying to resolve. I think that's the question. And it is unfortunately a really difficult question for us to ponder here. And as Kathy said, probably the most difficult question as, as leaders in a district that we have to ponder because we're creating disruption regardless of what we do. That's, that is the reality unfortunately of this very difficult situation. But nonetheless, there is board policy which would allow families to request to, it could be anywhere, right? It could be go to West District or Union or Noah or to stay at East Farms. You know, as we move into the next year, we'll continue to monitor that. It's really the, you know, the principals at each school that are, that are monitoring that, they'll certainly have the support of both assistant superintendents and the district office in trying to give them whatever resources they need. We also have our family support liaison. I don't, I guess it would depend on how many requests we receive at the school and what the capacity in each grade level is, you know. To say yes and have elementary classes of 27 or 28 is not, is not a feasible solution either, right? And so I wish I could give a more exact answer. You know, I think I could say with confidence that we will, we will work very hard in the months ahead to have a comprehensive and communicative plan. You know, at this point, we would have essentially 12 months, right, where we're going to be working through this. You know, one thing I would propose is to let our team continue to work on that and come back to the board with, with some additional suggestions and proposals and of course, communicate that effectively to the public, including personal contact with families being impacted and continuous focus on district-wide communication around this because it is impactful across our community. But it's hard to answer specifically who we can accommodate for that request. For example, if, you know, five families wanted to stay at East Farms, it's certainly plausible that that could happen. But if it was 15 or 20 in a grade level, you know, if we went back to, you know, to our, to our numbers from October, October 1, you know, I don't, I don't believe that the school can accommodate likely 21 fourth graders staying, right? You know, it may not be able to do that. So I know it's not a great answer, but, but it's the reality of the situation as well.
It wouldn't characterize as a great answer or a bad answer. I'd just call it a truthful answer. I think that's ultimately what this process was about, was to making sure we had enough data, enough information to make a thoughtful and honest assessment of how we can accommodate students at East Farms and Noah Wallace. And our responsibility is to 4,000 students to make sure that, and certainly the roughly 1,000 or so that are in elementary school across district. And we have to make sure that there's equity across the buildings in terms of instruction and fairness and that the classroom sizes are appropriate. And this process was intended to kind of resolve that challenge because we know we have a challenge. So I just want to offer that thought. Maybe?
Is there an option, because we have had, well, first question I have is, because I don't have my numbers here, but for the Farmington Ridge families, how many are actually impacted? Is there an option to potentially, I know we have the policy, so following the policy to an exception for them to stay at East Farms, but could they just be grandfathered possibly to not have to renew every year if they come forth and want to stay there? Of just those that would be, you know, obviously truly impacted, is it five people, five students? Looks like there's seven students.
It's hard for me to answer if I, I don't know if you know how many are living on that, how many current students are living in that, on that particular street. So it's hard for me to answer that because it's all about the numbers.
Right, but I'm saying currently today, of the students that would be impacted just for this timeframe when we approve it, and then going forward, the students would have to continue to move to Noah Wallace, like just being grandfathered for this period of time to stay at East Farms. Is that at all an option? If they follow the policy, obviously.
How do we single one neighborhood out?
Yeah.
You're asking to single one neighborhood out.
There are other families on other streets that probably feel the same. There are other families on other streets that probably feel the same way. I think we've just happened to hear from this particular street.
Maybe just in general, like, is what would be the number that's tolerated then? And it's first come, first served? I'm just throwing out some of my, just last-minute ideas.
So I think we would probably have a better answer to that question if, if the board directs us to proceed. You know, we'll have a, October 1 is when state reporting is due. We know that's not when, when things settle, right? We have students moving in and out of district on a daily and weekly basis. So it would be something, I, I think the best answer to that is it depends. You know, it depends on, on, on where we are next year. On October 1, we'll have a projection. And then as the springtime continues to progress forward, we'll have a better idea of, of what, you know, in this case, based on the question right now on the table is, it depends where East Farms is, right? And, and what those numbers are and, and whether or not that can be accommodated. It's plausible, but, you know, it all depends on, you know, and unfortunately, it might be a case where first grade can accommodate students, but third grade can't. And that might not work depending on, you know, for example, I have a fourth grader, or next year I'll have a fifth grader. And, you know, if we're playing this year, I have a fourth grader and a second grader, and there might be, you know, space for an additional fourth grader, but there might not be space for a second grader. So it might not work for my family, whereas another family might have a first grader and a fourth grader, and there might be room, you know. So it really, there are many, many variables here. So I do think we would certainly try to help families understand if they want to exhaust that option, what they would do in order to do so. But we would also have to talk about if we got numerous requests, how do you, you know, we would have to think about how you, how you grant, which requests get granted and which ones do not, right? And so those are, those are a lot of mechanisms that need, that will be, you know, under my leadership and responsibility to figure out how we do that in a fair, a fair and transparent manner.
All right, so we're clear. We're not foreclosing anyone's opportunity to apply under the policy that exists to stay at East Farms or, or not, you know. We have a policy in place that allows that to happen, and it's done by the building. And, and that's how I envision this shaking itself out. You'll work on it, you know, as you said, you know, implementing it over, you know, figuring out how you're going to implement it and all that kind of stuff because there's undoubtedly going to be requests. And then how do you want to handle that? How do you want to process that? You'll report back to us as that goes along, and then we'll kind of give you guidance as it plays out, right? That's kind of how I see it playing out.
That would be my hope, is that we could present some initial ideas and then take feedback from both the community and the board and continue to move forward. You know, right now, we don't have that issue because, you know, on a yearly basis, there's a handful of requests that come in, if that, per building. So it's not a difficult decision. You look at your class sizes, but, you know, if we have more than a handful of requests and there's only three, three spaces available, then I'll have to come up with some suggestions for that and how that'll be handled. The policy right now allows the request, and then the principal reviews the request and grants or denies based on the capacity in the building.
Obviously, you can't accommodate 60, I think it's 61 or so, who might want to come early. But can they, over the summer, you know, from now until the start of school, apply for the exception to start at Noah earlier? I know you can't take all of them, but are, are we allowing that?
Anybody is, is always welcome to make that request. Based on, you know, the reason we didn't offer it to all the families is because it's, there are, in some grade levels, no capacity, and in a few grade levels, single digits of capacity, less than five. And so to answer your question, yes, you know, a family could reach out to Dr. Huber and to the office at Noah Wallace and say, "Hey, we'd be interested in registering. We're currently scheduled to go to East Farms." But, and, and then, you know, depending on how the registrations go throughout the summer, Dr. Huber could make a determination based on whether or not there's capacity. There's not a lot of capacity in Noah Wallace right now to accommodate any requests.
So I guess, because it's something you're going to be working on for the next year for those who might want to stay at East Farms. But, so my, my question is, I guess, like, what if there were five requests for first grade at Noah? Five first graders want to come over to Noah early, and you can't? You can only take one or two. How is that going to be decided?
Right.
At this point, right now, it's, if Dr. Huber receives the request, you know, if she gets five in one day, we would have a discussion around that. You know, we may not be able to accommodate that. But that's, that's not what we're experiencing right now. But it's, like I said, I, off the top of my head, I can't recall, but there are some grade levels that have no capacity currently as well. And that, and that's because the, the building is being utilized. We would need to move those pre-K classrooms out, and that's not, you know, on the table right now until the end of next school year.
Anybody else?
So, two things. One of them is a comment about, you know, for example, Nadine, when you mentioned about, you know, maybe, maybe make an exception or grandfather in the, that particular street. I feel that that would be a slippery slope, and I would want to cautious us, you know, all of us because as other, as Beth said, other families are also impacted. And so I, I, that to me is a bigger slippery slope as to how do you justify making a grandfather in for one street versus another? So making sure that those decisions of exceptions, those decisions of who, you know, and why are done in a very, very mind, you know, I mean, I know we're all going to be mindful about it, but it's sort of like, we need to be consistent with our rules, you know, whatever we, we put in place. And so I would, I would just, I would just say that it's, to me, I, I would feel as though, again, it's a slippery slope, and I would want to know why one street versus another, especially if a parent comes in, you know.
Right, I was, I was meant, what I meant by the grandfathered is if they follow the process for an exception to stay at the school, that they don't, they can be grandfathered, not have to re-request the following year to stay in the school. So they would be able to stay through just that core group of kids that are there right now, and then future Farmington Ridge would, would move. It's just this group of parents or families that are impacted right now. Because we do have other streets that they're projecting families that aren't currently, that are impacted, right? So could we look at another street that isn't currently having development, but is expected to have development and swap a street? But then that goes into an equity of all these other streets. I don't want to go down that path.
Right, because now we're starting to substitute our judgment for that of the...
Yeah, I'm just specifically talking about the continuous need to get an exception year over year.
But that's going to be dependent on building enrollment though, right? I mean, because it's also, because you remember, you're also going to have families coming in that are absolutely, you know, supposed to go to East Farms or whatever, you know what I mean? So how do you, I don't know how you can, again, this will be part of the implementation discussion, right? So we don't have to decide all of that tonight.
Okay. Sorry, Billy, I did have one more.
Sure.
I apologize. Something that I did hear from the parents, and, you know, you all know, I'm a social worker, so I'm always mindful, I'm always advocating for our young students and our, our young people in general for their emotional well-being. And, you know, I appreciated the, the parents' comments about personally to having a child who experiences anxiety whenever there's a transition, you know, and that not only impacts that child emotionally at home, but also that impacts that child in the school setting. And then academically, there is a ripple effect. So one of the thoughts or questions that I have, and it maybe kind of follows up a little bit with what I thought I heard Angela ask, was about a liaison. And if it's not a liaison, like, somebody who, as you're all developing that implementation plan, what can, how can the school social workers, school counselors, school personnel that are, you know, very much in, in the field of implementing and the practice of this emotional awareness of our young students? And as, you know, what can be done in the sense of you can include that in your implementation plan for checking in? And it's a tricky, it's also tricky too because, you know, you don't want to, just these conversations alone now, and as the community knows about it, then the kids are, could start to be talking about it. That creates anxiety. That creates stress for our young students, you know. And, and then we start to see disruption in the classroom. We start to see disruption with peers. We start to see, you know, things that we never would have normally have seen with that particular young child. It's maybe because that young child is experiencing some stress because of not the knowledge that he or she is going to be going through a major transition. So what I would request is that in your implementation plan, that there would be, you know, the meetings with the school social workers, the school counselors, the, the team leads, the HOCS necks, all of those people that, that, you know, I know I have reached out to on multiple times to ask for, you know, to have a conversation about my own child who's experiencing maybe any kind of stress that's impacting him during his school day. And I think that it's going to be very important as these transitions happen, that we're very, you know, we include those school social workers, those counselors, and the parents to help with that transition period. Thank you.
Good point.
You're welcome.
Anybody? Okay, I'll need a motion at this point.
It's a very long motion.
I see that. I read it. Why is, I don't know. We should have talked about this motion.
Well, because it's, it's not, you know, you could just say approval of scenario option, you know, free scenario.
Right.
But it's, it's important to describe.
Okay, fair enough. All right. Okay, you don't have a slide for this?
No.
It's so, it's so long. That's great. Okay, this is going to be a minute, so give me. I need a motion to approve the Enrollment Ad Hoc Committee's recommendation, Scenario 3, Option 3. Scenario 3, Option 3 is defined as follows. Effective in 2025-2026 school year, pre-K programming currently in place at Noah Wallace School will shift to Westwood's Upper Elementary School. Additionally, this option includes redistricting of designated streets and addresses from the East Farms Elementary School Neighborhood Zone to either the Noah Wallace Elementary Neighborhood Zone or the Union Elementary Neighborhood Zone. And there'll be a chart indicating this when the motion is published. The recommended motion is to approve the recommendation of the Elementary Ad Hoc Committee, Scenario 3, Option 3, effective 2025-2026, with shifts pre-K programming from Noah Wallace Elementary School to Westwood's Upper Elementary School and redistricts designated streets and addresses from the East Farms Elementary School Neighborhood Zone to either the Noah Wallace Elementary Neighborhood Zone or the Union Elementary School Neighborhood Zone as follows. A, redistricting, moving students from East Farms Elementary School to Noah Wallace Elementary School residing in the following streets and addresses in the 2025-2026 school year. Bailey Court, Brickyard Road, Bridgewater Road, Central Way, Diamond Glen Road, Durham Lane, Eastview Drive, Farmington Avenue number 979 through 1276, Farmington Ridge Drive, Fenwick Drive, Forest Park Drive, Grandview Drive, Greenbrier Drive, Hampton Court, Hatters Lane, Hidden Spring Lane, Hilltop Road, Lake Shore Drive, Linola Drive, Melrose Drive, Mountain Road numbers 1 to 136, Poplar Hill Drive, Reservoir Road, Round Hill Road, Tunxus Village, Theodate Lane, Walton Way, Westburg Drive, and Worthington Drive. And then B, redistricting, moving students from East Farms Elementary School to Union Elementary School residing in the following streets and addresses in the 2025-2026 school year. Farmington Avenue, future housing addresses 1293 through 1371, odd-numbered residences only. And move further that the board authorizes the administration to develop an implementation plan and report on that plan at a fall 2024 board meeting with periodic updates to the board throughout the 2024-2025 school year in preparation of the 2025-2026 school year full implementation plan of Scenario 3, Option 3, to alleviate overcrowding and address space utilization at East Farms Elementary School. Need a motion?
Motion. Second?
I know we've got a lot of preliminary discussion prior to the motion. Any additional, any new ideas, anything else, anything that we haven't covered already? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to move up, if I could, consideration of assistant superintendent. All right, on the agenda of our next item up is discussion of school resource officer reports, some executive session stuff. What I'd like to do is, if I could, move up item 9, consideration of assistant superintendent financial operations report, move that up and make that a new item 8(c). Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Scott?
All right, thank you very much. So I'm pleased to review the April financials with you here. As you heard earlier, we're in the process of closing out the year in the business office. I don't have a lot of new overwhelming trends to report. It has really stayed on trend. You know, I think you'll, you'll continue to find that. Obviously, we're, we're through May. We're just waiting on the insurance, otherwise we would have reported that. But continuing to see, you know, our areas that have been largely overspent stayed on trend. Transportation and tuition being, I think, highlights of those. In addition, supplies, as you learn throughout the budget process, with custodial needs. The explanation of account status on the back of the third page shows you where we've, where we've applied projected revenue. And, you know, I feel like everything is running smoothly as we're now into June and working on that. And then on the insurance, I'll just call to your attention that after two on-trend months, insurance was overspent in April, which I look back to last year, and we, and we were actually overspent again in that spring month last year. So staying, staying on trend with that. Overall, we're having a good year again in insurance as we look to move into the summer months.
Everybody have any questions? I get a motion to approve the April 2024 financial statement report?
Motion. Second?
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up, we've got two items for executive session. So I'm going to need that, right?
There's a flag at both, going to executive session for both reasons.
Right, right.
You can keep going.
There you go, right? Okay. I'm going to need a motion to adjourn the meeting to executive session at 9:08 PM as permitted by Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-225(a) for the following purposes, as allowed by Section 1-200, Sub-6. That is, discussion of school resource officer report, which results in disclosure of public records or the information contained therein, inscribed in subsection B of Section 1-210 of the Connecticut General Statutes, student records. And B, discussion of the FPSCU contract for years July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. And that the attendance of the executive session shall be limited to the members of the Board of Education, superintendent of schools, and the assistant superintendents.
Motion. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in executive session. All right, you need a motion to return to, to public session at 9:47 PM?
Motion. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next item on our agenda is new business, item 8e. Approval of the FPSCU contract for years July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Get a motion to approve the contract for those years as presented?
Motion. Second?
So I would just have Scott just go as presented.
Yeah, Scott, could you summarize the as-presented part?
Absolutely. So the, the main highlights of, of the contract, it's a three-year contract with Farmington Public Schools Employees United. And for the first year of the contract, which starts July 1, 2024, it's a 2.4% increase, general wage, 25-26 is a 2.7% GWI, and then 26-27 is a 3% increase for all members. In addition, the premium cost share over the three years raises a half percentage by year in addition to an incremental increase in the in-network and out-of-network out-of-pocket maximum. So that's the salary and benefits. In addition, there were some language changes throughout the contract related to vacation time, retirement, in addition to some informational revisions that we hope assist both employees and managers in implementing the contract. Are there any questions?
Nope. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And report of the chair. Well, this is our last scheduled meeting of the year. It's been an eventful year. We've got a lot, we've got, we've accomplished a lot in the last six months, including a new bus contract, among other extraordinary challenges that we've had to deal with. We've passed a good budget. I'm very grateful for everyone's work that we got to get that budget passed in a collaborative way with our colleagues in the town council. You've all worked really hard. I appreciate your patience with me as I've moved into this role as chair. It's been a really, it's been, I have to say, I've enjoyed it. And I really enjoy working with all of you. So a couple of last items. So a couple of last items. IR promotion is Thursday, June 6, at 6 PM. The location is in the gymnasium. VIP parking is in by the tennis courts. Someone will be there to let you in. So if you're going to the IR commencement, maybe a D note is confirmed, and then be there for 5:45 on Thursday. James is going to stand in my place to pass out the certificates, and I'm grateful for that. FHS graduation is Friday, June 7, at 6 PM. The rain location is in the main gym. The same date and time, please confirm with D whether or not you're going. Please arrive at 5:30 and meet in Russ's office. You'll park on the auditorium side of the building. You'll get a VIP parking pass once you let them know whether you're going, that you're going. Enter and walk down the long hallway through the doors. Russ's office is through the doors on the right. Water bottles will be provided. BOE seats will be labeled, and we will walk in, we will walk to them with other administrators in possession. If you're, if you're there, you're coming, you'll, you'll kind of figure it out. That's about it. Nothing more. We'll see you in a couple of weeks just to ratify the new administrator's position. Other than that, I don't see anybody, because remember, you don't have, I mean, we just need a quorum for that meeting. So if for some reason you can't make it because you're traveling, just let us know, okay?
Do you know what, when?
I don't know yet.
You don't?
So, but like I said, we're traveling. We're just going to make sure we have a quorum of five to do that, so. If I don't see anybody, whatever, enjoy your, enjoy your summer. You guys all worked really hard, and I appreciate everything you've done for us this, this, this last six months. So with that, we are adjourned.